Okay. We're back. Um, and we were just talking about the, um.
I think you left off with planting.
Yeah, okay, so did Laura mean the plant more? The point that we don't have a planting plan?
You need me to?
Yeah.
Do you need me to put my phone back up?
I think we have the.
I just can't get.
We have a plan, that's okay. I think we have a plan.
Alright. Yeah, we would definitely be open. Um, we definitely want to get a landscape architect involved. Um, we see that that's very important. We need to be aesthetically pleasing. Regarding the grading though, the grading design was dictated by the fire department. Uh, maximum slope. So we can tweak it, but we've already done building relocations in those numerous areas I showed you, so. Um, but we definitely want a landscape architect involved, like seeing what type of plantings, how we can fill in the naturalized area. That's very important to us. We, we definitely think that we can do that. Um, but we're just trying to get approval to start doing our site work.
So you're already doing some site work out there now, those huge boulders that have been excavated or blasted? Um, was there exposed ledge?
Um, I'm not aware of. I know there were some areas along the driveway where our survey picked up ledge. Um, so I don't, I don't recollect if it's been moved or not. But, once we realized that we were triggering the special permit, we stopped work and we got, got into the planning board. Um.
I guess I'm also concerned about where these giant holders, I mean, some of them are really quite large.
Mm-hmm.
Are gonna end up, like, how is that actually gonna? Where they gonna go?
So if I could make a suggestion for consideration, if you're bringing a landscape architect on board to look at planting, um, I think the landscape architect could also look with, with you at grading. I know that you're, you're saying the fire department set the grading plan, but the fire department didn't do the grading. They just gave you that requirement, your meeting.
Yeah.
And I do think that it's not as though you're trying to limit the grading to an area that's already disturbed. It's a very heavily disturbed site now. And so that, I think that if you brought the landscape on, landscape architect on early enough, they could help you massage the grading a little bit and do a planting plan and think about where the boulders might be reused so that the whole thing hangs together a little more, looks a little less engineered and, and resource some natural um, appearing topography to the site. So that would be my suggestion to consider is don't wait and consider it like we'll figure it out at the end. I think it would really help your case if you would bring that party on to the team now.
Can I make a, amend that to say, I don't think it should be a consideration. I think it should be a condition of the approval, that a landscape architect be brought in within, what, a month?
Agreed.
Six weeks, something?
We would love to do that.
And then a plan be presented for approval by the planning board a hundred and a month after that. So we're, we're starting to see um, how, how the landscape architect is shaping the grading and the planting plan.
Um, well, I think one of the criteria for the application requirements is actually how the design features intend to integrate the proposal into the existing landscape and to preserve the same, enhance the aesthetic and to screen objectionable features. So, um, well, why don't we take any public comments? We do have some other things to get done tonight. Um, okay, go ahead. Tell us your name and address, please.
Yes, I am Thomas Frank. I live at 195 Summer Street, which is approximately across the street of uh, given that the, the property was clear cut, stripped of all vegetation and half of its hill was uh, ripped off of the top. Uh, I set about trying to find out a little bit about the requirements we're required to the meeting today. And I learned two things. First of all, that the applicant was dissolved by the Secretary of State in 2023, so I don't know who we're talking to this evening. Uh, and there's no master D P permanent in view from the street. Uh, so I was unable to find out what that permit was about, given that there seems to be a heck, a lot of things going on with the environment. One would have thought there would be a plan on file. You know, my purpose here tonight is, I think, shared by many of the members of the board. Uh, what's it gonna look like when it's all done? And it, you know, it, it's really disturbing to me at this point. Uh, you know, I'm not an architect, I'm not a civil engineer, but there are a lot of mature trees taken out uh, at the curb on, uh, Summer Street, I think for no reason whatsoever. Uh, I don't, I didn't hear you discussing replacing those.
That was a consequence.
Planting diagram all related to the view of the homeowner, not for the rest of us. Uh, you know, I share the concerns about what this ten-foot wall might look like from the street and so on, or from surrounding high points in the area. Um, and again, I'm not a civil engineer. Uh, but using the maximum grade allowed by the fire department one-to-one seems like, uh, it's predestined to never support any vegetation on that slope. Um, and I have, I share your concern.
Can I comment? So the vegetation.
Let's just, let's hear from, um, the comments and then we can address them entirely. It will be normal.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Christine, go ahead.
Hi, thanks. I'm Christine Delicio, Sixth Lincoln Avenue. So, um, I just tuned in for something else, but I did have a question about the stormwater. I understand that it has gone over to uh, DPW and that there's an application and it appears that this would trigger it. But when it was with the planning board, one of the first questions we would ask is the stormwater. So, um, if this does need to be reevaluated, if you approve this, it's gonna be almost a day late and a dollar short. So what is the procedure for getting that and prior to you approving your permit? Does that make sense? They need a, it appears that they need a DPW's permit for stormwater. And so when are you going to check that box with yours and your landscape sloppings and retention ponds and whatnot? Because there isn't a butters notification involved with that application. Thank you.
Uh, I'll answer that. I, I don't know that we have determined that a stormwater permit is triggered or not, but that would be a question that we may want to ask.
Yeah, so you, yeah, so the common drive has been approved by D E P. It's under file number zero three nine dash zero eight eight zero. So under the, uh, previous law, it had been approved.
Absolutely, common drive.
Yes.
Stormwater.
Yeah, anything for stormwater related to the lot itself.
Um, we just did the design for the maximum extent, practical on the infiltration trench. Um, whereas we're outside the buffer zones and we're, I don't believe we need a D E P filing.
No, but you don't need, but you need a DPW for stormwater permit. You have to, I mean, I think the, isn't the standard that you have to, your post-construction has to be not exceed your reconstruction rates and?
For a single-family dwelling, you don't have, technically, no, it doesn't.
Well, the, the, the only thing is that what you need to do is check with the public works department. The town did adopt, recently adopted new stormwater bylaw. And so it's administrative review by public work. You need to make sure that what you're proposing is consistent with what they can approve. And that you trip, it's not certain whether you actually trip something needing their approval, but you should check before, um, you know, this, this approval would be, let's say finalized.
Yeah, single-family dwellings by the master water handbook are exempt, but I'm not sure about the local bylaw.
That's, that's what we discussed at the last town meeting. So that's, that's what you need to check was the, your trip by local.
Was this added in the last town meeting?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so this is.
And I'm not familiar with it because of. Yeah, it was, yeah, because it was, um, and it was just approved by the A G. It was this week. So it was, um, yeah, so it was done by public work, so you need to check with them.
Okay.
You know, whether you need to, maybe you don't.
Yeah, we can check with them.
Somewhat consistent with the state.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so I'm gonna suggest that we continue this. I think we have some outstanding questions. We don't know, we, we need to have you talk to
Mm-hmm.
DPW as well.
Yep.
And see if we have a, need a stormwater permit and, um, uh, and then, um, I think Laura's suggesting that we have a landscape architect, um, group to soften this up a little bit and to come up with a planting plan that's appropriate for, um, for these steep slopes.
Planting and a grading, grading plan.
So a planting plan seems like we could condition our, uh, a special permit on that. But if it's gonna change the grading plan, then that, then that, um, uh, the other possibility on this, I know it's, uh, I know what, what you want, but we do have the provision to, given the, the complexity here. Um, we can hire a, uh, a third party at your expense to review and, um, that's, um, I assume that you don't want to do that, but that is certainly an option. I mean, this is a tough site, so you'll come ahead, it might be better than than one. I think, um, speaking for myself, um, at the very least, I want to see the the, the wall with the, um, stones on top of it, but I'd also like to think about whether there are some of those walls could also be a more natural stone wall kind of.
I'd, I'd like to add to the wall material choice of refined grading plan and a, a professional planting plan.
So, um.
Can we continue there?
Let's, um, we'd like. Oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Is there any more comments online?
Keep saying you can't on you.
Anybody else? Anybody else in the room? Okay, um, I'm gonna ask the applicant for, uh, to, uh, continue this to our next meeting, which I believe is March, like, fourth?
Yeah. Um. Our client would like to speak as a.
Yes, go ahead.
He should be, I think he's online trying to, he said he couldn't unmute himself.
Oh, uh, which one I see? Maybe, uh.
If you need to click participants at the bottom.
Um. To be able to unmute yourself. I'm sorry, his name is?
I'm showing up as on the screen. His name? Can you view more participants?
Hi, sorry. I, can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Tim Huff. I'm the property owner. Um, I was just, I just wanted to say a few words. Um, so there, I do, I, I'd like to talk about like a conditional approval or have that considered if possible. Um, because I have a little bit of a time crunch, given the fact that I have four school-aged children. And I'm trying to get, you know, moved into the home uh, in time for them to attend school at the very beginning of the 2026, 2027 school year. So in order to do that, I was really hoping to, you know, get a conditional approval so that we could get going on the site work um, and kind of continue that and then revisit, you know, some of the landscape architect. And I'm more than happy to, you know, return to the board in, in a month or, or two months or whatever is deemed a reasonable amount of time with a, you know, a well-thought-out plan, because it is my intention to live there with my family. So I don't want to have something that, that is an eyesore or is bothersome to the neighbors or anything like that. I'm, my, my intention is to be, you know, a part of the community for, for the foreseeable future once, once I move in. So I just wanted to kind of toss that out there.
Yeah, I think we can appreciate, uh, your, um, time constraints, but I think, um, my sense is that the board needs to see some more details here. Know whether you're gonna need a stormwater permit and, and rest assured that it's being addressed and that, um, that we need to be able to understand the plantings on the site a little bit more. So I think if you come back with a more specific plan in two weeks with, um, planting plan and, um, clarity on the stormwater, you may be able to do a, do a conditional permit.
And, and the grading, I was thinking that grading, I, I echo exactly what Laura said, and she's be less engineered, but.
Yeah.
Can I, may I ask a question? What, what is your schedule as far as what are you doing right now and what do you need to proceed on?
Well, ho- honestly, we, so about, I think it was maybe three months ago, we ceased site work when, um, you know, it kind of, it came to, to my attention that we were gonna need the special permit, at, at which time we, you know, started to engage with the planning board in order to, you know, be in front of you guys, um, so that we could hopefully get the approval. So we haven't done anything for, oh gosh, probably about three months. Um, you know, call it, I call it middle of December. Um, so in order to, you know, in order to hopefully have an occupancy permit, um, in say, you know, early August of 2026, we probably need to start, you know, building in May of this year, which would mean a foundation in like late April. Um, and there's probably about, uh, my, you know, site contractor estimated about four weeks worth of site work to be done in order to sort of stay um, kind of be able to keep that schedule. Um, so, yeah, that's why I was hoping to get kind of a conditional approval this evening. And then, you know, happy to revisit, you could revisit in, in two weeks or four weeks, um, with, you know, a much more well-thought-out and thoughtful plan from a landscape architect, because like I said, it's, I have every intention of, of living there and I want it to look good. Um, both for, for myself and also to, to be a good neighbor.
Well, I think, um, we appreciate that and I think, um, look forward to having you in the community. But, um, I don't think we're prepared to, to do this tonight. Does anybody disagree with me? I think I'm getting a consensus that we want to, uh, see back here in two weeks with somebody's questions answered.
Yeah.
Um, all right, um, I'm gonna make a mo-, uh, motion to continue the public hearing to, uh, March 24th at a time, we just said, set time. Let's take it seven, seven, and then we can take this against. Got a motion?
Don't move.
Okay.
Second, um, on favor? Okay, continuing the public hearing till the 24th. Okay, thank you. Sorry to disappoint you. Um, great. Um, okay, at this point, I'm gonna, oh, thank you, um, to open the public hearing, um, for, uh, zoning changes toward, um, three matters, accessory dwelling units standard, accessory dwelling units large and associate planning board members. Um, we're gonna have a public hearing, um, and we will have a second public hearing on any of these, um, for a couple reasons. One is we have to, uh, um, some of the matters we want to talk about here, so we can then post a hearing, um. All right, I'm gonna mute.
Uh.
Um, and, uh, sorry, um. So all of the, uh, matters that we talked about tonight, we'll actually have another, have a, a, a public hearing as well when we have the final version. But we wanted to give the public an opportunity to weigh in on, um, these proposed zoning changes that we're, um, proposing for town meeting. Um, there is a time crunch of, we're getting, um, the final versions to the select board for the warrant. And, um, we are gonna post, we've posted a meeting for Wednesday at 7:00 PM to finalize the version, so that my envision, what I envisioned tonight is that we will, um, talk about these, Mark will revise them and then we'll vote on them, um, to take them to the warrant um, on the 17th, and then we'll hold a public hearing. And if the public hearing, we can always make changes, amend them on the floor, other kinds of things, um, for, uh, that, um, Cindy?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I have to say my name.
Yes.
Sandy Rogers.
Let me open the public hearing, sorry. So I'm gonna open the public hearing. I'll have a motion first to open the public hearing. Don't move. Uh, okay. Sue Felber, yes. Gordon, there he is.
Chris, yes.
Gordon, okay.
Yes.
Sandy Rogers, 82 Old Essex Road. I just have, um, a question. Seeing we had the technical difficulties and people were off and it was advertised that the meeting was at 6:30 for the public meeting today. Um, I'm concerned that not everyone is gonna have a chance to attend today's meeting to weigh in in what you are evaluating. So I'm very concerned about that as an issue. Um, I know you say you're having a public meeting, but that's gonna be after you're determining.
Okay, uh, so noted. Um, we did have technical difficulties. That is why we will have another public hearing that hopefully won't have technical difficulties. This is one of the challenges. Um, so, um, there will be a, a public hearing, um, and there'll be opportunities tonight and Wednesday night for people to give input. So, um, with that, I'm gonna, um, start off by just, uh, oops. Hearing, um, green here, just sort of summarize where we. So, um, we're gonna have a hearing on, on the, uh, issues, associate members, standard accessory dwelling units, large accessory dwelling units, then we're gonna introduce uh, three or four other, um, issues that we hope to bring to town meeting. So, um, versus, um, the issue of, uh, associate members. So, um, please some point. Tonight, we have a special permit. Two, two members out for what, uh, reasons, and it's a busy time of year. So, um, in order to act on a special permit and sometimes these like self-signaling took, took a long time and actually, uh, went, uh, over between an election cycle, um, where we had one member who did not run for reelection. So in order to, to vote on a special, in order to affirm a special permit, um, you need a super majority, which is five people. And, um, or it is constructively approved. And there are rules about who can, um, act, how you can act if you have missed the meeting. So the proposal is to have a so, an associate member or two who can act when regular members are unable or unavailable on special permits or on other matters. Um, and the question we're interested in hearing from the public is one or two associate members. Um, whether they would be appointed by the planning board or the planning, or the select board or a joint planning board, select board. And whether they should serve for one or two-year terms. Um, and this is allowed under state law. Um, any comments from the board? Um, I, I guess.
So I have one comment that the Board of Appeals already has associate and associate member.
That are pointed.
Pointed by the.
As is the zoning board.
Yes.
Okay. So in this case, um, I think we would like to hear, um, oops, from the public on the, oops, sorry. Um, any comments from the public on, uh, associate members as to whether or not we would like to have one or two appointed by the planning board, the select board, and one or two years, any of those topics? Okay, I'm seeing no, um, no.
My hands raised.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Christine. Sorry, I don't want to.
Christine Delicio, so, um, as the member that did not run and was the cause for a little bit of angst with the self-signaling. Um, I do see the value in this, um, as I did before. And I do want to reiterate that I do believe that this is an elected position and I do feel like the um, power of the planning board as an independent board, um, should be retained and that the appointment process should be solely through the planning board. So I am supportive of it. I think two years is a reasonable time. I think it takes quite a bit of time to get your feet wet. And, um, I think start with one member and see how it goes. And if you need a second, you can always add it. I just, it's a lot of time and a commitment. So for me, um, one person, two years, and it should be appointed by the planning board only. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Harris.
When there's a vacancy on the planning board, it is filled by planning board and the select board acting together.
Okay? Is that a suggestion or just a statement of fact?
It's a statement of fact. It is a recommendation that you continue to follow that process.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, um, if, if I, if you're in line and you have any other comments, please, uh, sing out, um. Okay, the board, we need to, uh, make a recommendation so Mark can finalize this, so we go to, uh, get it to the warrant and, um, uh, I'd like, I'll speak to the fact that I think two makes sense for two, uh, two-year terms that are staggered. And I agree with Anne, um, appointed by the planning board and select board as other vacancies. Anybody have, want to argue otherwise? Um, go ahead, Laura.
I agree with Anne about a joint.
Okay.
I think that that's a good, uh, way to, to continue that model.
Well, I definitely agree on two members staggered for two years. I'd go either way on the appointment issue.
Explain to me staggered.
So well, the, for, in the first year, one person would be, get a one-year appointment and the other would get a two-year appointment and then, um,
Okay.
So that they, so that they're not always, you know, now we have two green people.
Okay.
Expiring at the same time.
Yeah.
Rolling, rolling.
Rolling.
I would, I would agree with all that. And as I stated, it almost is written right here, two, what board and planning board makes the choice and for a two-year period.
Right.
One other idea is you could bring them on in a staggered way, whether they're getting a one-year appointment, you could bring someone on to your appointment. Wait a year, bring someone on to your appointment.
Thanks. Yeah, probably a better way to do it. Okay, Mark, I think, uh, Christine, you have your hand up again?
I do. I guess this isn't a vacancy, so I do see a difference in the appointing of the joint boards or the planning board. So this isn't a vacancy. This is an open position that the planning board is creating. So I do see a difference. And, um, I don't see the need for the planning or the select board to be involved, quite honestly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mark, I think we've given you direction for the, to finalize that. Okay, the next, um, topic is, um, uh, accessory dwelling units. Um, so I'm gonna turn that over to Sue to just sort of summarize, um, the first part and Chris will summarize the second. We'll take comments on both of them together.
Um, so just, everyone's probably in a different place on, uh, being up to speed on why we're doing this. Uh, why we're doing this is because the state passed another law. Um, this one they passed last year and it went into effect, uh, in February of this year, which, um, requires that every city in town across the state allow accessory dwelling units, townwide, citywide, statewide, um, in every zoning district uh, that allows single-family zoning. Um, now, we currently have some bylaws dealing with ADUs. We've been trying to change them anyway, but they're completely ineffectual right now. And so we're left with the state uh, permissible ADUs, um, without any guardrails around them. Um, the, uh, regulations that accompany the law do allow for some guardrails. Uh, we would like to pass a zoning bylaw that incorporates as much, um, of the guardrails as we can, um, so that we're catching up with the state law again. So what we're proposing are actually two separate ADU bylaws. The first will deal directly with the state law that I just described. Um, and we're calling it ADU standard. Uh, that deals with, right now, if someone owns a piece of property in Manchester in a single-family zoning district, um, they, if they get a building permit and, you know, satisfies building codes and other applicable uh, laws and regulations, they can go ahead and, uh, build an ADU that is 900 square feet or less, depending on the, uh, dimensions of the, um, the single-family home that's already on the property. Um, so this, the first accessory dwelling unit standard deals with that. Um, so we are permitted, uh, to add a requirement that we can require one parking space, um, but not within the half-mile radius of the MBTA zoning. Uh, the MBTA commuter station again, um, but beyond that for every single-family, uh, district, which is every district in town except for the LCD. Um, we can require one parking space per ADU. We'd like to do that. We'd like to include that in the bylaw. Right now, there are no requirements, uh, no parking restrictions. Um, the second thing we'd like to do is we are allowed to either restrict or prohibit short-term rental in the ADUs. We would like to do that. Um, we would like the public's input. We think, uh, a prohibition on short-term rentals is the right way to go with, for Manchester for ADUs. But we're willing, we'd like to hear what, uh, our residents think. And again, we're just dealing at this point with the ADUs that are required, the standard ADUs. ADUs. We are allowed to include site plan review. We'd like to do that. The AD, we can have dimensional standards that are consistent with what would be applicable to the residence that is already on the lot. We'd like to do that. And we'd like to include a requirement that only one ADU be permitted per lot. So have I missed anything? That's a summary of what is in the bylaw that we're proposing that is called ADU standard. And when we take it to town meeting, it is a simple majority vote, since it deals with multi-family housing, an ADU plus another structure on the lot.
Okay, so now I'm going to turn it to Chris, just to explain the large accessory dwelling units. An accessory dwelling unit is large.
Okay, so a standard accessory dwelling unit is allowed by right in the state, anywhere in the state that's a single-family residential district. And that includes the general district as well, so everywhere in town except us, who said the LCD. But there are, they are limited to 900 square feet, and 900 square feet is sort of a typical two-bedroom apartment on one floor. There may be situations where 900 square feet just doesn't, isn't appropriate. And I'll give you a couple of examples. Let's say I own a garage in my backyard, and on the second floor, I'd like to put an accessory dwelling unit, but it's 950 square feet. Well, I couldn't do it unless it were designated a large, a large accessory dwelling unit. Now, to get approval for a large accessory dwelling unit, you'd need a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. So they're not, they're not by right, but they are allowed with a special permit. Another example might be, I have a house that I'd like to divide into two, I have an accessory dwelling unit within the house, but a natural dividing line within the house might result in the second unit being 1,000 square feet. I have a 3,000 square foot house, 1,000 feet of it would be a perfect place for my mother-in-law to live, but I couldn't do it without a special permit. You can't do it under the standard ADU law. A third possibility is the proposed occupant of the accessory dwelling unit may have some special needs. They may have handicap problems, they need a handicap bath, they have to be on a single floor, who knows? Maybe they need a little bit more than 900 square feet also. So we've been talking about what the size restrictions would be, but a standard ADU cannot be more than half the size of a unit of an existing primary residence. We think probably a large ADU shouldn't be more than half the size of the primary residence as well. And then the question is, is there some threshold, what's the maximum it could be? Well, we've thrown out 1,500 square feet, but maybe that, maybe people would prefer somewhat smaller 1,200 square feet. What we're really looking for is a safety valve to allow people to do ADUs that are slightly larger than what's allowed by right under the state law. Now, with a special permit, we can attach all kinds of conditions to it, as we are doing with the, this project on Summer Street that we talked about earlier. Of course, any ADU, whether or not it's with a special permit, has to meet all the requirements of the rest of the zoning bylaw, so the, you know, the dimensional requirements of the district. If it's in a historic district, they have to comply with that. If it's in a water resource protection area, they'll have to comply with that. So this is not trying to get around any other provisions of our bylaw. It's just allowing people to create small residential units on their property. And the large accessory dwelling unit is just a way to allow a slightly bigger than 900 square feet.
Um, and then all of the ADUs, as we've currently, both the small and the standard, have a set of conditions, and I've added here in, well, one on a lot, that are, we've been advised, the reason I haven't read, second standard ADUs requires a special permit is because that's on advice of council. They just, we just got advice from counsel today. So I tried to, so the large ADU shall not be permitted on two family or multi-family properties. What we, what we believe is that the standard ADUs are actually permitted on a two-family property by, by the state regulation. That we would prohibit short-term rentals and leases of less than six months in orders, and counsel had a little bit of question about whether we could limit leases less than six months and orders in the standard ADUs. That they should comply with the floodplains, water resource protection, historic districts, the water and sewer utilities shall not be separated from the primary unit, and that was advice from the DPW. We can't limit the standard ADUs in terms of their ability to be titled differently than the primary unit, but we certainly can with large. And all additions for ADUs need to comply with lot coverage and primary building setbacks. We have, they're constructed on permanent foundations, so they're not mobile homes type things, shall use existing driveway, and that the application process includes floor plans, elevations, and engineering plans. And as I sort of put this together and thought about it, one of the advantages of having a large ADU distinct from the standard is the second, it's 901 square feet. It gives the ZBA, that's the granting authority, a significant increased oversight. So that I think is a reason, if we think the market wants 905 square feet rather than 900, or something slightly larger, then by allowing them, you know, parallel regulation, it gives us a significant, significantly more oversight. And we propose two parking spaces for the large ADUs, at least in the current draft. And I think this last thing is, is a table that tries to summarize the highlights of the two, the two types. The standard ADUs are allowed by right, 900 square feet or half dwelling, in any residential districts that excludes the LCD. Can regulate it in the way shown here, no short-term rentals, separate entrance, separate entrance is the same entrance should be, oh, separate entrance means front door, and then the same driveway. And parking is one space for the standard, except near the transit station, and large two spaces. All of these things can be, we're here to hear input on these issues. Why don't we take comments from the public? Christine, go ahead.
Hi, again, Christine Delisio, Six Lincoln Ave. So how far a dwelling unit could be absolutely huge? I mean, there's a lot of quite large homes in Manchester, so, and you can get up to an ADU of close to 2,000 square feet, that's another home, right?
It would be whichever is smaller.
Well, it doesn't actually say that.
Well, in the proposed regulations, it does say that.
Okay, and so according to these, is the, you know, the recent bylaws that were changed, everything can be waived? I mean, is there exceptions for things like this, that it can't be waived? Or can you waive 901?
I think the special permits have a provision that certain provisions can be waived in a special permit, if the permitting authority thinks that there's a good reason. So I think that the special permit, as we have currently drafted them, the special permit rules apply.
So 901 could be waived. So your description of it being, you know, more oversight may not necessarily be true. Is that true?
I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's, I disagree with that, but we probably will disagree, agree to disagree on that.
But it's not a trigger. 901 could be waived, is the point, right? It's not?
No, 901, 901 square feet would call, would require a special permit.
And it could not be waived?
Correct.
Cannot be waived.
No, no, correct.
Okay, great, thanks.
Other comments? Andy?
Sandy Rogers, 82, Old Essex Road. Is this intending to eliminate the existing bylaw? You're nodding your head. Many ADU bylaws across the state have a lot more details regarding what the ADU structure would be like regarding design standards, whether there needs to be occupancy of owner in the residence. Other than a separate entrance, I know that even this board has spoken about locations of the entrance, and if you start looking at a lot of the other, you know, intentions of the ADU from the state, they do want the ability to, or mandating separate utilities for the ADU. I don't know about the water and sewer that might be separate, then electrical, et cetera, gas, et cetera. So I think that that needs to be considered and written in. So I think it would be helpful for the public to see these written out, all the details. I don't know where that is, of how everything is actually added. You might be presenting a summary, and you have all these details. I don't want to assume anything, so it would be good to see that. Secondly, I know that we have to pass something for the state, and this is just, you know, weighing in my opinion, we just passed the MBTA zoning. We are mandated to ensure that we're allowing for this 900 square foot ADU. I think we should put a pause on the larger one, and make sure that all the details are written in to what we're allowing through special permit, and it might, you know, there might be more debate about the size of it. My house is smaller than this. A lot of houses are smaller than this. And so if it is a separate unit, and it's actually existing already before this date, it could be right bumping up against other people's properties. And so there might be a lot of concerns about neighbors regarding having that as a separate ADU. So I just, there are a lot of things to consider there. So thank you for considering that.
Can I just, a couple of your comments. Thank you for bringing up, the proposal is actually to delete the existing ADU provisions, and those are that the special permit, and you can have an employee housing in an accessory structure. And so our feeling on that one is that this 900 square foot by right kind of satisfies the intent of that. So I think, seems that's pretty easy. The second, existing ADU bylaw requires a double lot, and that the house exists prior to 1984, and doesn't have any of the, those conditions that you described, but does require a special permit. For the standard ADUs, design standards, unless we currently require them for the principal dwelling, are not allowed. But we could use the design standards from the multi-family perhaps, if we wanted, for large ADUs perhaps. The separate entrance, I believe, we're not 100% sure that we can require that. And separate utilities in the standard ADUs are not allowed to have that be. Even though some, some towns have done that, the EOHLC has said that that is not legal. And...
The other thing you brought, sorry, we've done, the other thing you brought up was the owner occupied. We're not permitted to have that as a requirement for the standard ADUs, but have, are we for the large? Is that, we are?
Yeah. It can't be specifically titled, which is maybe the...
Well, that means you could have to turn it into a condominium.
Right. Yeah.
So again, that's a great reason why we might want to make sure a lot of the details are worked out for anything larger than the smaller.
And I believe that we have them on the website, right? The zoning, and they were in the meeting package, right? And we have...
We have some hard copies here.
So there are a lot of details in the proposal. We tried to summarize it for the public, right? But those are good points that we... Other comments?
Yeah, I was actually looking for some clarity.
Yeah, can you just...
So we currently have a multi-family house, two-family, we, yeah, owner occupied, and we have our onsite shop that we're looking to convert into an ADU. So we're kind of looking to see who that falls into this category. I think a lot of my questions were answered tonight. Most of them were. It's 800 square feet.
900.
We have off-street parking, was built 40 years ago, and it meets all the setbacks. So the only issue, I guess, was, I thought it was just a single family, if it was a single family, but you just said that it was two families, right?
Yeah, it's in single-family districts, and the building inspector and council have said that, and the hearing that we went to, is that, so I believe that you can use the existing state law. Now, the enforcement officer is the building inspector, so this is simply my opinion. But that you, in my understanding of currently, the state law is that you can have an ADU in a two-family, provided that you, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, no, that's, that's the clarification. Yeah, we spoke about this, and at the time, we were trying to say you can only have...
We wanted to prohibit that, but we're not permitted to.
We're not permitted to. So you would be able to do one, still one accessory on the lot beyond your current two-family, so.
And the state law, which we should add into our standard, is that if you want a second standard ADU, it's a special permit. A second protect that 900 square foot, we need to add that in. Although the state law would also dictate that, but we should be clear about that.
We should say it's the ZBA.
Yeah. Right. So the intent is that we, the way we've drafted this bylaw, is that it would be the ZBA, that would be the special permitting authority. Does that make sense? Yes?
Sure.
We have enough things to do. Does the ZBA have an opinion on? I don't know, we should ask them.
No, we'll find out.
Yeah, we should ask. Yes, Sandy?
Just a question on what you said, just so I understand it. If you are a single residence, you can have only one ADU. But if you have a multi-family...
You can have one ADU.
You can have one ADU, but then you were saying a second one would be special permit.
And I would say that...
And that is, why would you not do that for a single family?
You could.
Yeah.
You could have two, every, the second year, the second year would require a special permit, but you could...
And it doesn't mean the special permit has to be granted, I think.
That sounds...
You know, but, and that's the state law. That is, that's the state, the regulations of the state, of the regulations, specifically say that a second ADU has to, can be required to have a special permit. That's why I think we need to put that in.
And, and one final thing I want to say about this is that the existing ADU law in Manchester has been superseded. It's gone for practical purposes. So what we're trying to do is put one in that, that allows us at least some regulation, best we can do.
I get a question though. In our bylaw, which would, the section that applies to all ADUs, and this has not been commented, removed, if we say only one accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted on a, on a lot. So the law says you can allow a second one by special permit.
One.
But you don't have to.
Right, right.
And so the way we currently have it drafted is not, can only do one.
All right, we should check that.
So, well, she didn't...
She didn't flag it.
She didn't flag it as an issue, so either did Paul.
Okay, so I think we should move that.
So I would not add the language for a second ADU. The language for a second ADU gets, can have a special permit. So I don't think it'd say, right, that you have the right to do that, only if a lot is like.
Okay, we do have copies, if people want to get into the weeds a little bit on, on that. The, it seems like council raised that some things that we can't do, which we just therefore have to strike, and asked some questions that had some fairly obvious answers, like historic district that is required. But I didn't see any other things that were significant that we really needed to, to discuss. But do people want to just take?
You want me to just run through it?
Yeah, why don't we? Which one are we, this is?
Standard ADUs. Really, it's still common that you do the, just the general requirements. So she says to take out number two, which is the ones pertaining to the two-family or multifamily properties.
Can I just back up for a second, Mark? In the past, when we've deleted sections, we have not enumerated, but we have not listed the whole section to be deleted.
Oh. She says that I should strike, you know, do it.
Do the strikeout?
Do the strikeout, which I started doing.
Okay. I think that's clearer, I think when you, you actually tell me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Her second comment had to do exterior elevation plan. And will be submitted for any application with fine addition for a habitable space. She says, is this only for attached ADUs? That's kind of clear for any means attached or detached, but.
What number you want, I'm sorry?
Number four of nine point one. Three?
Yes.
Nine point one two.
Well, you can have a, a hatch that is an addition to the house.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah.
Can I make a clarification on kind of all these?
RSN.org?
What?
RSN.org?
Can we, for number four, can we stretch plans? You can't have an elevation and a plan in one drawing. It's an elevation drawing. I just, I wanted to be not confusing. Plan and.
Mark, what are you reading from right now?
What are you reading from?
Looking at the lawyer's comments. Oh, you're looking at the same one I have there. One said the accessory dwelling units shall not be permitted.
So the, the leasing question, she says, I don't believe you can require this, but she doesn't cite. Like, why?
Right, so why not just leave it in and then if the AD, if the AD wants to strike it, they can strike it.
I agree. The next comment had to do with the historic district mission, only if otherwise required by the HDC.
So, yeah.
It is required in, and it just only says in the historic district, so. Her next comment was, may want to confer with, about separation of utilities.
Chuck was adamant that, that the water and sewer utilities not be separate from.
So we'll leave that.
He said, well, he said that the reason, the reason is that it's another disruptive, it's another service, it's another. Anne, you had a comment?
My usual comment when we're talking about water meters is that we have very progressive water rates. And what would be low rates for two dwellings would be much significantly higher if they had to be joint. Now, that's money for Chuck.
That was why.
This is the price of an ADU.
Yeah.
I, you're penalizing the person in the ADU potentially, I think that's, you're penalizing somebody a lot for having their grandmother live with them. I mean, I don't know, that's an interesting point.
I, I wouldn't call it a penalty, the person is getting the benefit by being able to rent it or use it for family members. So if it turns out you have to pay a little more for that, that's not necessarily a bad thing.
Or maybe the, maybe the DPW can make an exception for people who have approved accessory dwelling units. It's a watery problem, not a zoning problem.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But maybe, this is Ann Harrison, thirteen Texan Road. Having the DPW compute separate rates.
Yeah.
For individual buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
Is just putting a burden on, on the town hall.
Let's, why don't we just circle back with Chuck and see what his rationale was and whether there's also possibility of having.
Well, one of the things we did discuss was still having a single service off the main line. Past the curb stop, let's say full water, you can split it and then they can run two meters or.
Yeah, that's it.
So the two, and just like for electricity, you still have one service committed to the house. When it hits the house, that's where it splits into two meters. They don't run two lines though.
Okay.
I could adjust the language as such and then leave it open on the one service that we serve each property. And open, whether they split it and put in separate meters. So for a single-family home, if they, if they're doing a, single, it may not make sense to try and replumb two parts of the house. But if you're converting that garage in the back, you already got to run trench new water line back. Maybe easier to buy it somewhere in the front.
Mark, one of the things that we should think a little bit about is the standard, this, this nine point one, point two use regulations apply to both types of ADUs. But if the attorney general strikes it because it's part of the standard, then it puts the, and it's not listed under large, then now whatever that criteria is, does not apply to large. So I think we should have general regulations for standard and then repeat them for large. So that, you see what I'm saying? If it gets struck from this section, then it won't be in the other one.
Right. So.
That's just a formatting, I think you're going to have to just repeat them.
Really? Why can't you just say all of the regulations for a large? Sorry, for small also applied to large.
Yes.
Plus additional ones.
But the issue is if the attorney general strikes the first one, only one accessory dwelling unit on a lot.
Well, then we can just repeat that, just repeat that.
But it could happen to any of these.
Any of these.
Well, not any, but several of them.
If a historic district one was struck, I don't know. It, you see what I'm saying? I, I just don't want to risk.
Yeah.
So that's just a formatting thing, we can, you need to think about that. Okay. Lot coverage requirements and setbacks. I don't understand why she's so focused on that.
I don't know.
So. And borders, we'll leave that, we decide we're going to leave that in, but that's an example. So if that gets struck from this one, now it's not in the large. So.
And also the, the six-month lease one.
Right. But even any of them.
Right.
Mobile homes or whatever. Okay. So I think we've, have we given you enough guidance on this one? All right, let's, and look at the next one, which is the large ADUs, who's the state law comments. Last one, Sandy there.
Jeff, did you want a copy of these?
Sure.
Want one more? I'm sorry. No, no, a accessory dwelling unit.
An exciting stock.
Let me, Christine has her hand raised. Christine, do you have a comment on the standard ADUs as well? Christine, do you have a comment?
Oh, sorry, I was speaking and unmuted, so yes. Christine Delisio, six Lincoln Ave. So in the past, the town has not really kept track of ADUs all that well. I just want to make sure that there's a mechanism because each ADU that we approve is going to increase our housing stock, increase our vulnerability to a forty B, you know, every ten ADU gives us another unit that we have to put on the SHI. So I do think it's important for us to get a handle on how many we have. And also, I do think it's discriminatory to say that you can't have your own meter on this. I mean, if someone is using this for another unit, I mean, they should be entitled to a new water meter and a new line, if that's important on that property. So I think it's discriminatory to say that you can't have another service. And one final comment is, have the corrections been addressed before we're, I know this one, this particular new zoning change has to be added, but particularly driveway entrances, who is enforcing that? Is that being addressed hopefully in this round of bylaw changes? Thank you.
Getting to that later in the meeting.
Great, thank you, I didn't see that.
So it seems to me that, that is an interesting point about the, you know, additional housing units. But it's not going to be part of zoning, so it's got to be at the professor and the building inspector's department or planning.
Yeah, so, yeah, as far as tracking the number of new units, I mean, yeah, probably through the building, it's not a requirement, I think, had been.
It's still in there, that we should keep a record of each ADU permit applied for, proved denied and issued certificate of.
That's in the state regulations.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the state does want us to keep track. So here's another thought, and I don't know how we get at this. But I, I think all of us know of spaces that have been renovated with a sink, refrigerator and, you know, states, you know, countertop induction unit. And that those are not considered to be accessory dwelling units under state law. Should we try to capture those as ADUs or can we?
Well.
In going forward.
I think the problem is, is if it doesn't meet the definition of a dwelling unit, because it doesn't have a full kitchen. Meet what the standard is, so like if you just provide a microwave on top of the countertop, as opposed to putting the whole stove in there, it's not actually a, a extra unit. So again, this is something we'd have to check with all, but I believe that.
But I wonder if we could expand cooking or, or, or say cooking, you know, if we could define cooking facilities to be that kind of thing. So.
I think the problem is the word self-contained. It's not self-contained.
Housing unit.
The regulations do define dwelling unit. I don't know how we could expand that for the standard.
That was going to be one of my questions, is what defines an ADU versus an apartment versus anything else? It needs to have a bathroom, it needs, it's well, it's a separate, like all of those.
It is a self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleeping, cooking and sanitary facilities on the same lot as the principal dwelling.
It's just on the same lot, right?
The, let's see. Yeah, a self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleeping, cooking and sanitary facilities on the same lot as a principal dwelling. Maintains a separate entrance, and they're directly from the outside through an entry hall. Size limitation. And then dwelling unit is defined as a single housing and units providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking and sanitation.
Say that dwelling is a single, does it say single? That a primary dwelling is.
The principal dwelling is a structure regardless of whether it or the lot it is situated on, regardless of zoning, including use requirements and dimensional requirements such as setbacks, bulk and height, that contains at least one dwelling unit and is or will be located on the same lot as a protected use ADU. And then you go back to dwelling unit, which is a single housing unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking and sanitation.
We're all safe. So the point is one or more dwelling unit, unfortunately. Yeah.
So wouldn't that contradict a ADU inside an existing structure? But you're saying a separate.
Separate entrance, so you could take your back family room and, and make a separate entrance come in the back and.
But it's not, at that point, it's not a separate structure.
It doesn't have to be a separate structure.
To be an ADU, it doesn't have to be a separate structure, a self-contained housing unit.
Right.
So that could be your attic or your basement, a separate entrance either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor here with the principal dwelling.
So it does not have to be an accessory building. And in fact, if you think about the character of the town and if you think about keeping it small and affordable, arguably taking a large house and carving off, you know, the family room or the living room that you never use and making that an accessory dwelling unit within, without expanding the footprint, is more consistent than, you know, adding a.
Right, I, I was just thinking to Sandy's point about where, what's an apartment?
Right.
What's an ADU?
They're the same thing.
Yeah.
So the, in talking with the fire chief and the building inspector, they did say that they would require a firewall between the two. They would see them as.
A true firewall?
That's what he said. Wow.
That's hilarious.
It is a separate living. You know, he would treat it as an apartment.
So the state law requires that with apartments? So, yeah, reasonable.
Yeah, I was going to ask about fire code. It's, you have to have one entrance, but I don't know, over a certain size, do you need to have a second entrance because of fire regulations?
So do you have over, is it three units, three or more units you have to sprinkle? So to their question, so let's say you have a two-family and you want to, in that same building, add an ADU somehow. That triggers sprinkling.
Under the building code? So they make it clear that the building code applies.
And the fire department did say that they would require a sprink, so that is a hurdle, a big hurdle, if you have a multifamily or a two-family. So that's separate from ours. Yeah, I mean, I think, I'll speak for myself, I think this should be in single-family homes only. That was, we, I made that comment to the state in the regulations, but then did not, that is not, did not flow through. And several other people, I think you made the comment, like we read written comments. So. I'll stop sharing, so I can see people. Okay, let's go, keep going through the large, Mark. Um, okay, let's go keep going through the large, Mark.
Her comments are, if the standard ADU fails, what would you do with the large? And I'm assuming you'd make a motion. Or I wanted to hear where it is.
Pass it though.
Yeah, pass over it, yes, so. Was for the straight through any object. ADUs.
I do think we have to repeat that set of conditions for this. Based on, yeah. It also will make it easier to modify than if we aren't. Um, what do we feel about the, the short-term rentals prohibition? Does anybody want to keep against that? Okay. Um, Mark and I also talked about a standalone article that just probably just add to the table. Short-term rentals in ADUs, no, 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 no. In the table. And that way, if one of, if one or both of these doesn't pass, we can have just that prohibition as a near prohibition going forward. Um, okay, any other comments on those?
The one question that Sandy asked before about electric utilities services, will there be a separate meter for this ADU?
We've been silent on that. And the standard that it said you can't make that.
Really?
Because to your point, there was somebody who spoke at the hearing who said, this is what they have done in Hoover, I think, one of the Ws. They said they are, they're requiring separate meters, requiring separate water, they're requiring firewall, I don't know what all they were requiring, owner occupied. And they said, and those, they said these don't apply with the standard of protected use. So it was a specific set, mostly the, that list that you just gave us. So the other towns have sort of tried to preempt this by putting in those. So for the large, we could require it or allow it. Right now, it's, we're somewhat on that question.
Yeah, in the regulations for the standard, it says any requirement concerning utilities, safety and emergency access that is more restrictive than permitted by state requirements, including the fire code, is no good. A municipality may not require a separate utility such as water, sewer, and electric, provided that a separate connection may be required by a municipal or regional utility, investor-owned utility by state law, by a local, regional, state court of commission, or by court order.
Or by anything else.
Maybe except the town.
Yeah, Laura. Um, a few comments on the large.
Yeah.
I would, and they're my usual comments, one is, I would suggest going down in size from fifteen hundred to twelve hundred. And then my, my regular comment, which I always make for the record, is the parking requirement should be the same for the large as it is for the small. I don't believe, I think we should be minimizing the footprint of these things, both in the size of the unit and the parking. If you go to nine hundred and one square feet, we should, if one wants two spaces and they can justify it, fine, but I think it has a result in the amount of paving, the reduction of vegetation, tree removal, and so forth. And so I would, I recommend one, same, same parking requirement for both.
Okay, but the standard doesn't require any, you can't require any within the half-mile.
I would say the same.
Okay.
Same exact requirement for both.
Okay.
One parking space, none within the half-mile.
Okay. The other thing is that our, this, the two for the large is a half a space, whatever that is, larger than we would, than you would have if you had a two-family. So a two-family would be one and a half per unit. So it seems to me we should, at the very least, make it the same as the as the parking table, which would be one and a half per unit. Me, the, in Manchester, the no parking spaces within a half mile of a train, I understand the intent. Which, but in Manchester, it's pretty hard to not have a car, whether you're within a half mile of a train or not. If you're gonna see a doctor, what?
Buy shoes.
Buy shoes. Right, right. But you can go to Boston and buy shoes, I guess, for Beverly on the train. But it is the frequency of the train and the, I would argue, the reliability right now. So personally, I think we should require the large to have something.
Would that be one additional?
Well, we can, we can just say large ADUs shall comply with the parking requirements of section. Put in line.
Section five.
Section five.
That's the one and a half. That's different one than what Laura suggested.
Yes, I mean, I could compromise on the train, but I think one is adequate. If you've got a nine hundred or a nine oh one or nine fifty square foot unit.
So there, you're two, two required for a single-family house, right?
Right, so you've already got two.
So you got two, so you're adding an accessory dwelling unit. So it'd be three, so that wouldn't be compliant. I agree with Laura.
So the other piece of this that, that concerns me is, we want this to pass, parking is always an issue that people care about. The other thing is that the regulations allow for a parking space that is either on the lot or on the street. I believe, is, so isn't that correct? That parking space can actually be on the street or the protected use.
The protected use.
And therefore, given that you could have one of that, let's assume that, you know, we're going to get ten of these, that's ten, either potentially ten more, potentially six more cars, I don't know what it is, some portion.
It says more than one additional on-street or off-street parking space for protected use ADU. If it's within a half-mile, you can't do that. Any additional on-street or off-street parking for protected use ADU outside the half-mile, they don't really say. It's not clear. It was clearer before they changed it. So it's not clear. But yeah, I think we would want to specify off-street.
Okay, so we have three options. We have the two. We have go to table five, which is one and a half, or we have Laura's suggestion of one.
Actually, going to table five makes sense because it's.
Other, let's just get them, we're dealing with a word on this, other two words.
I would do either one or the tape.
That would be one as well.
One. Sandy, you have a comment on the parking?
So I would do the minimum amount that you have to do it by the regulations for parking, especially if we're dealing with off-street parking. And then if you, if they need another one, it would trigger a special permit and you can evaluate whether that street can accommodate the off, additional off-street parking, or, you know, they can do a little addition and, you know, maybe extend their driveway a little bit as long as they're using the same entrance and.
You know, I'm suggesting that we say one. This might be increased by the special permit. To.
Well, you can, people can put as much parking as they want, right?
But the, but the special permit could require that they have to.
It could, it could.
Well, to her point, if it's, you know, it's a crowded street or the, it's a twelve hundred or fifteen hundred.
Right.
Square foot. Or the, the primary dwelling has very limited parking, there might be special permit conditions. Like we're talking about the large ADUs now. That, that could be.
Do we usually spell those out in advance? Does the, the potential for adding another anything, you know?
No, no, but I suppose it could be part of the special. Traffic is a special permit.
True, true.
So I think it could be, I think it would be incorporated, could be incorporated into the existing special permit. Without specifying it. So I'm hearing that one base for the large throughout, regardless of whether it's within the train.
Yeah.
Okay. How about the size of the ADU, twelve hundred square feet versus, so it would be nine oh one to twelve hundred?
You're asking the wrong guy. I was, I was for the nine hundred, not for a larger one, so.
Okay, so I think we're hearing twelve hundred. Anybody object to the twelve hundred? Okay, great, thank you. For raising that. Any other things on the large ADU?
Uh, one question, so at the end of the five of our special condition, accessory dwelling unit large shall only be allowed in accessory structures existing prior to April twenty eighth, and then comments that earlier we say accessory structures constructed after must comply with the primary and setbacks for an accessory dwelling units to be located in. One section says you can't have it, and one section says you can as long as you meet setback.
What does that mean, that last one about April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty five?
That's the date of the town meeting.
So.
So the idea is that some people are building a garage and then coming back and getting an, and putting in an accessory dwelling unit.
But they can build a structure, you don't need to build a garage, you just build the structure.
I think we can take out five.
Yeah, that's, but I didn't want to take it up to.
Yeah, good.
Okay, so I'm going to take a motion to close the public. Oh, sorry, Anne, go ahead.
Number six, which requires that you have a conforming lot. Is there any way that you could get a, a special permit if your lot was not conforming?
No, that's a good idea. Because your lot could be non-conforming by just a tiny amount.
Yes. So the answer is no.
Okay.
Unless we change the wording or eliminate that entirely.
We have to meet all the setback requirements and lot coverage anyway.
Lots in area E are large. But there are a few.
There are lots that don't.
That aren't, aren't.
There are a lot that are not. The two-acre was added fairly recently.
We could say you got to have at least a half an acre or meet the, or be conforming.
Maybe, maybe we just take it out because they have to go to the ZBA if they're non.
Right.
Yeah, forming anyway.
So what if, yeah, I mean, you could have a really big lot, but have not quite enough frontage.
Right, right.
An old lot.
Yeah.
Skinny and.
I agree.
And then they can't do it at all. And if they're already going to the ZBA.
Right.
It don't make sense to try and see if they could.
I agree.
Get variance.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, if the intent was just to not have it on all lots, I mean, you could say, you know, they have to be at least.
I, I wouldn't. I, I hear what Anne's saying, and I wouldn't start adding lot sizes because I feel like that could be discriminatory.
The other question is, should it be in all districts? So right now, we've, all residential districts, the large, we have, so Mary had, so the current bylaw, the the nine point one is, does not include district D one or D two.
Our current AD.
Our current ADU bylaw.
And that's because they allow two-family.
That's because they allow two-family anyway.
But a two-family could have an accessory dwelling.
Could have a nine hundred square foot. So.
But if there's a single-family home in D, I mean, I think we should not have any D, but are there some single-family homes in D that will be then prohibited?
They can have a nine hundred square foot.
That's right, they can't, of course.
So Mary had suggested, that was one of her comments, was that not included in the, a large in D one or D two.
What about G?
G? Yeah, what about G?
General district.
Yeah.
You're not allowing them in D one and D two, it should be G also.
Um, go ahead. Could we allow them, just throw stuff out there. If everybody wants to be able to take advantage of it, and if the large is intended for an existing structure, we want to say existing structure? I'm just thinking about like if you live in D and you have a garage and you want to put it over the garage and your garage has a footprint, then you know, you're going to have to put a smaller up on an existing garage that's a little, that's nine hundred and one square feet. Is there, should we, should we, I think the last time we talked, we talked about for existing structures only. But then I guess we're getting back to that.
That's where that April, that existing structure thing came in, that's why. I think that what Sarah was concerned about, the.
Vera Melish?
Vera Melish was concerned about the, if setbacks have a rationale for a primary dwelling, for a house. If setbacks have a rationale, ten feet, and you put your garage is either existing or you built, because accessory structures can have a short, a smaller setback. And now you put a living structure in that accessory structure. If there's a basis for side setbacks or rear setbacks
Right.
to protect your neighbors from
Right.
Whatever, Mel, you have burgers. Then now you've sort of diverted that setback rationale. We could argue whether that is a good rationale or not, but it, it has rationale. So back to D two, D one, and general for the large.
I can go either way.
The density, I mean, the whole purpose of the law is more small housing, those areas already have a lot of dense multi-family or not quote-unquote official definition of, they're already dense. You know, so I feel like I, I would support excluding.
Yeah, I would too. Anne?
My feeling is that it would be less controversial at that meeting.
I agree.
If, if the large were permitted only in purely resi, single-family residential.
It would be less controversial.
Yes.
Right, yeah. So all the districts except D and B then.
Yeah. And that's consistent with the current.
Exactly, right, right.
Yeah, that makes sense. We're good about.
So.
Are you, are you, are you striking?
Striking D two, D one, and G.
And I'm thinking, what was the outcome on six, the conforming lots?
I think we struck that.
Right.
I wanted to go back to that. That would be on all ADUs, including the by right for the larger one.
It would actually, it's, it's not allowed in the small, in the standard. So we can't specify that for the standard. And then it would be, we would strike it for the large. The idea being if you have a one point five, a, a two-acre lot in E, but you don't have that's existed since nineteen hundred, and you don't have the right amount of frontage, then you'd be a non-conforming lot and you couldn't do this, which seems a little arbitrary.
But for the large, they still are going through special.
Special permit.
So you would catch if there were any major issues because it was non-conforming, because it was too close to the right line or anything like that. You cannot do that for the smaller one, that's in the, right, okay. Just wanted to get that.
Yep.
Understood, thank you.
Important distinction, thank you. Okay, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearings. We're going to talk about a couple of things, but they were not posted, so take a motion to close the public hearing. Second?
Second.
On favor? Okay, thank you. Now we're going to talk about the other issues. Uh, let's see here. They're a little bit easier to understand. Okay, so floodplain bylaws, so we will be having a public hearing on all of these again. But Mark, you want to just give us an overview of the. But, uh, Mark, you wanna just give us an overview of the floodplain?
Well, the floodplain bylaw was required to update the floodplain bylaw. It is something the planning board worked on and she had reviewed by council in the state back in August 23, but I think that's when you started working on the NBA. And so it kinda got pushed aside. Now we're under timeline for adopting that new version, which has been amended a little bit since, um, since that time. So we have a new version of the bylaw that has been reviewed by council that deferred any sort of comments to the state, um, for what we have to approve. Um, so that was, um, submitted to them. They'd like me to add a few definitions uh, to the bylaw, which I did and I resent it to Eric Carlson at the state. I haven't heard back from him, but the, the, his comments were, were really minor to, which I did send out. Pretty much like he had a bunch of those definitions and wonderful ones. Thank you.
And can you just summarize for, um, people like the general, what is the bylaw required?
The bylaw.
What does it say?
Uh, basically, uh, it requires that if you're in one of the flood zones, you, um, have to comply with, uh, the standards for building in flood zone. And, uh, if you do any additions or new construction in those areas, and that way you can obtain flood insurance, so. So the bylaw.
Um, Shannon's asking you to speak up a little bit louder.
So the bylaw is essentially the zoning where it creates the zones and it refers to the maps. So we have to re-adopt. We, we have these floodplain maps that were created, um, uh, by FEMA. And so we have, these are, uh, what we, uh, have to adopt as well. And, uh, this is like creates the zoning and there's different types of floodplain zones. Um, and there are, I believe, five zones in the community. And, um, and so that's, that's what it does.
Right. And if people are looking for the floodplain maps, here's the URL. And, um, you click on that little blue piece, um, that shows, and then the maps are all there electronically. You can look up an address and see. So basically we are required to, and we've adopted the, the, um, bylaw that is proposed by, required by the state.
Yeah.
So. Okay. And I, I had said that there were two options. One is to have the flood regs in the zoning and the other is to modify zoning to allow the floodplain regs to be adopted by the planning board. And you proposed to have them in zoning. You think that's a better option? Okay. When we, when I made this, we.
Yeah, well, I mean, it could be adopted as entirely a general bylaw or it could be adopted in the zoning bylaw. Traditionally been at least in this town in zoning and many other places.
Okay, so we're gonna put it in zoning. I have a question about that. Oh, except, the only thing is that it requires two thirds. If it's a general bylaw, it's only a fifth. Okay, go ahead.
And like stormwater, we wanted it to apply everything.
Good thing, right.
This seems like a public safety issue. So shouldn't it be in the general bylaws?
And in fact, isn't part of it storage of gasoline and things and open containers isn't allowed?
Mm-hmm.
And that sounds more like a bylaw than is general bylaw than a some zoning bylaw.
Well, but it only applies to the areas that are in the zones here. So it's, so it's kinda like a zoning, creating these various.
We just get a town, did town council weigh in on whether it should be zoning or general bylaw?
Yeah.
Can we ask for that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um.
Sarah, or is that going to an upcoming town meeting?
Cause I'm. It, it's important because people can't get flood insurance if they don't pass it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's time sensitive.
Okay. Um, any comments on floodplain bylaw? Okay. Um. The next one is pretty simple. We have a lengthy introduction to our bylaw and it's out of date. And to modify it, because it is part of the zoning, requires a town meeting vote. So the proposal was simply to delete it and move it to a webpage, um, that we could, um, keep up to date and current. Um. So that's the proposal. My personal feeling is that I'm sensitive. If the town meeting is long and the warrants is long, we can push that off, but we have it drafted. So. I for, so that's the proposal there. Any comments?
There is a lot already that the planning board is putting forth.
That's right.
Um, so it can wait.
You could probably wait till the fall.
You should let the select board decide.
Yes. And so. Okay. Um, and the last one is to expand the applicability of site plan review. Just, um, I tried to paraphrase this. Uh, the current site plan, site plan review is triggered by a couple of places in the bylaw, which is number nine, where otherwise like required by the zoning. Um, and by the addition of five parking spaces. So Mark's recommendation is that we should add some additional, uh, triggers for site plan review. Um, that might not have a special permit. And those are construction for commercial use, uh, changing, um, a structure that's currently commercial, um, or, uh, can't read that, over 400 square feet and, or the aggregate disturbance of lot coverage of 1,500 square feet. Um. Development expansion and change of use requiring five or more parking spaces, which is the current occupancy of existing structure by commercial, which increases pervious occupant load, previously approved document load by 10%. Um, change of, uh, use in existing residential structure to a commercial use, a drive-through facility, multi-family construction or renovation of three or more units, um, and alteration of more than an acre of land. Or. Except for one or two family residential. Um, and town council had a couple of comments on this. Pass that to. That, yeah. If she wants to see strikeouts.
I don't get a good idea. Show all the strikeouts.
Um. Can I do that in words?
Yeah, yeah.
Um. Aggregate disturbance seems to me that's total. Here your change.
Yeah, so the next one, um, so I only thought about the second one, a change of occupancy of existing structure by commercial use, which increases the previous per occupant load by 10%. Well, a lot of that goes to the zoning board for a change of use. So.
Might not be a change in use though. You're just saying a change in occupancy.
Yeah.
Right, so a restaurant has a 200 person occupancy and it's gonna go up to 220?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I know, that's, seems, 10% seems like a little.
A marginal.
Yeah.
Is that what that's intended to be?
Yeah.
Sarah, literally the number of people who occupy.
I'm reading it literally.
Yeah, if you read it literally, that would be one interpretation or somebody, um. I mean, if they're adding an addition, let's cover it through something else. So, I mean.
Maybe we don't need them before.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm thinking. It may be a little too, plus if it is a change of use, a lot of those go and they're not building. I mean, the whole intent.
Right.
Primarily, I mean, this is in something similar as in other towns, but really does it come forward? I mean, it does. Can't say it doesn't.
Do we want, in number five, we have a change of use of existing residential structure to a commercial use. Do we wanna flip it? Why wouldn't we also want a change of use of existing commercial to residential?
Well, we need to put a change of use, period.
Are there more uses than commercial and resident?
Sure, institutional.
Professional.
Professional, yeah.
So the church, the, um, so a change of use from the church on, um, Paul Street to a residential would be a change in use.
But that would go through other.
So does it mean that we shouldn't do site plan review? Right?
Yeah, well, it would actually go through site.
It's not in the business.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
So I think a change of use, period.
Change of use, period?
So cargo unlimited, for example, would get a site plan review.
How about, how about with a site, I mean, if there's a change of use of 500 square feet, do we care?
Right, change of use.
Well, it's not a change of use of 500 square feet, it's the change of use.
Yeah.
I mean, there isn't a size associated with it.
But I wonder if there should be.
Well, I think it's just a change of use, period, which is what triggers it.
It triggers so much. It could trigger a lot, just leaving it by change of use, you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the original intent is someone takes a house, wants to add commercial space, right? So now you have to think about parking, access.
Right, right.
You know, they wanna beef up the lands, they have them do more landscaping, because it was a house no one could make, do anything, but.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think that's really the intent of this. Like this is.
So why don't we say commercial or institutional use?
Okay.
Change, a, from red, from residential use to commercial or institutional. But I also would like to see us do.
Like industrial, I mean, or other.
Yeah, it could be manufacturing, could be shops or.
Yeah.
Why, why put such a fine point on it? Why just?
Yeah, I like change of use. Because I'm thinking, I'm thinking about that, we've been talking about the downtown. It would at least trigger if.
I mean, like cargo, for example.
Cargo. Came in with a change of use that's, uh, not commercial, at least it gives us a little bit of, uh, um, oversight or, uh, I'm, the church becoming residential. Um, or the, another, what's another good example?
You know, there's, there's. The.
The gas station.
Well, the multi-family, um, on the corner of, of school and you, um, union.
Yep.
Used to be Lenda Crosby's, but.
Right, I know what you mean.
Um, where there. It has been suggested that they would change what had been residential to commercial.
Mm-hmm. Do we wanna? Drag them through that?
Yeah. I mean, that, that, that seems like a beneficial change.
Yeah.
But maybe you do an easy site plan.
Right. I'm not sure, I don't know what answer to, but, um, I think we're presupposing that it's not a beneficial change. It's just a change.
Right, right, right.
That deserves, I'm looking at. Okay, I still think a change of use, but it, that's broader. What do you, Mark's squirming.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not necessarily like reviewing everything.
Right.
And driving, and so, um, usually in, and commercial uses in our zoning chart are really just pretty much all the commercial.
Right, okay.
Uh, are, are under that one section. We have accessory, now we have community and, uh, residential, and that's about it. So.
Commercial covers all the. Everything, yeah.
All the commercial stuff. So, so I think that's, that was really the intent is, because, um, you know, if someone's changing a, a house into something commercial or butterish, issues potentially.
Right.
Lighting.
Right.
Access, I mean, the number of things is, and so for that particular reason, even if they're not adding on to the building. Um, or.
But isn't this controlled by general zoning anyway? There aren't that many places that allow commercial use to begin with.
There's enough.
Just, just.
So that's why I thought it, it should just be focused to that one issue and not overly broad.
So it wouldn't go both ways, commercial to residential or residential to commercial?
Why would you review a residential?
Because it.
But multi-family already has a different review process anywhere.
No, I'm thinking of the downtown.
Someone's take, yeah, well.
Gives us a little.
I get it.
If our downtown, if the bank wants to convert to four condos.
But it's a plan review. It's not a special permit, so you can't say unless there's some sort of.
Does give a little bit of.
Gives you a lot of control over what they put up. Gives you a lot of control over what they put up.
I'd like to see us do residential to commercial and commercial to residential.
Yeah.
Can I come back to number three? It says five or more new parking spaces. I thought that we used to get site plan review exists or, you know, if there's a change proposed, whether they are existing five spaces or new five spaces for site plan review.
Yeah.
I think that's like the existing list.
Yeah, you just.
That's what I thought. Yeah, but it says new parking spaces. So I think there's a change there from what it used to say. It was just five.
Oh, more new.
That's, uh.
The occurrence is all existing and proposed driveway spaces, driveway open. Okay, um. Requirement, sorry. Any new development, expansion or change of use other than single or multi-family in which under the parking schedule require five or more parking spaces. Whereas the number of parking spaces pre-existing on the premises.
So this is requiring five or more new.
Yeah. So I think we should just keep what we have today. Mark?
So.
It's on page 111. Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? Any comments on, from the folks online? Okay, seeing none. If anybody has any, please speak up.
One more in number H. Why do we get into those types of use that are agricultural and, sure.
That, that we're accepting those.
Yeah.
Who are allowing those by right? Is that a change? I'm only, the, the only reason I'm asking is because sometimes there are chemical heavy pressures.
Yeah, but I think they're protected use under statute.
Right.
So you, I didn't wanna get into.
I see.
And so the idea is if someone has a large piece of land and they start altering it, um, create drainage problems, other things. And so if it's not necessarily in a wetland, it, it's not gonna go to conservation, so, um, perhaps it ought to go through a planning board review prior to someone clearing a lot and impacting a neighbor with runoff or, you know, even if it's, so for example, the Summer Street property. If that was more than an acre. They would have to come.
By.
Now, they can do these permits concurrently.
Right.
So they don't have to come back and come back and come back. But, uh, it could have been, um, reviewed or that's, I don't remember if that's more than an acre.
And that's something that's fairly standard. You've taken that from another, from other.
Yeah, it was, it's been a issue in other communities where it is more commercial. Not someone clears a lot and next thing you know, there's cars parking there.
Yeah, it wasn't at all about that alteration of land. That was the, the exemptions, exemptions. So that's, I have their justification for those. Okay. Okay, any other comments on that? All right.
The, the only thing is, is two more comments, like what does this mean when in addition is proposed to an existing building? The planning board reserves to arrange to review the existing structures site. So it, we already have requirements above, like what kicks in. So I think what she's saying is, well, why are you adding this as well? And what's this really mean if you're saying, you know, if you're adding more four hundred square feet or altering so much more, then why do, why do we have this as well?
So you, she's saying, well, it does seem like it's sort of hanging out there.
Yeah, it's kind of hanging out there, and so.
You suggest and delete it?
Yeah, I would say just delete it, let's, you know, we, we don't want.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're deepening it up and we don't need to make it more confusing than if the public. Let's say, think about.
Okay. Any other issues on zoning that people want to raise? The, the other one we talked about was just a, an article that just has the short-term rental, who didn't need to use. We're going to just make a separate article around that. Okay? All right. We're discussion of general bylaws, section forty-six, driveway entrances and planning board regulation. So this is a fast-moving new info as of four p.m. Right?
Yes, so. I had a discussion with the council this afternoon about the driveway entry. She would like to have a follow-up discussion with Greg about it, but basically the summary is. She feels that the higher regulations kind of really need to be revised. That it's, it's placed in the general bylaw. And although it, it should be clarified, some of the items and issues, so. So she wants to have a follow-up discussion with Greg, because he was present when this was revised in the party. About the, um, the applicability of planning board special permit. So the bylaw sets some standards, but then says standards beyond, other than this, gets referred for a special permit. But there's no standards in this, or you can't apply your zoning special permit standards to this because this is in the general bylaw. So, um, the only standard you could apply is, is it a public safety hazard by allowing a second driveway? Or allowing a narrower driveway or, or whatever, or a wider driveway? Or a steeper driveway? Does it create a public, because that would be the only justification for not issuing a special permit because you have zero other criteria to use. So she recommends like a full rewrite of this. And she says, there's nothing that's absolutely pressing that needs to get done. But work on it and then send it to the next town meeting.
Yeah, so this is what, I just kind of pasted it up there, I didn't take time to summarize it. I think the issue is, one of the issues that we have currently is that if somebody creates a violation and puts in a, two entrances, we mentioned this on School Street. So it's her, correct me if I'm wrong, it's her opinion that they can come and apply for a special permit. And we can address it on a safety basis.
Mm-hmm.
And even though it's says it's, there's only one allowed, that's her. And that going forward, we need to fix it so that there's special permit criteria, whether it's in general or goes back to zoning. And the other thing is that this is driveway entrance, we've had this challenge of driveway entrances versus driveways. And they're mixed up in this general bylaw. And so it needs a little more thought, is her recommendation.
Yeah, and then her other question had to do, which also needs clarification, is it a public roadway or private roadway? So if it's a private roadway, then what would standards be? Obviously, there should be some standards for public safety, like the fire truck. But there are perhaps other standards that do not apply. So, or that you shouldn't be trying to regulate on a private roadway. Let's say such is the number of driveways onto a property if it's a private road. Maybe for public safety, you could regulate grades and widths.
I, I don't understand what criteria would ever use besides public safety. You don't like the color of the cement on the wall or something? I don't.
Well, it's a ADA.
Well, that's public safety. It's all public safety.
Well, the number, number of driveways, number of driveways is not necessarily a public safety issue at all.
You can make the case that it is. I mean, there's literature out there, and the number of times you have a curb cut across the sidewalk, that's pedestrian safety.
Right, but most of our roadways here, a lot of them don't have curb, don't have sidewalks on them.
Doesn't mean people aren't walking. Or riding a bicycle on them.
But a lot of.
Yeah.
So we have a, we have this problem of, the other, you know, another example of the two driveway issue is there's a house that had an old easement across, had two, historically had two entrances. One of them has not been used, and so the sidewalk, it needs a, needs a curb cut, actually. And that the topography of the house is such that if you can't access half of the house unless you have the second driveway. So there are, there are circumstances, at least that one in my opinion, is like kind of a no-brainer. That's coming soon. So, um, there, so there are other, there are sort of unique circumstances. And then we have the problem right now of somebody who's put in this two entrances, thinking that it was making things safer. Whether they are or not, so that we need to contact them. And say, come see us.
So they have been contacted by Public Works.
Yeah.
They were told to come see me, no one's come yet. In discussing this with council, she wants to clarify a few issues with Greg. Where she makes a final determination that they can't come for the planning board for a special permit, even if they're on, right, period. If you so.
Right. So I think the recommendation from Mark is that we live along until we can. Even though we spent way too much time on this issue.
I, I think, yeah, I think, given the limited amount of time that we had since the last town meeting to now.
Right, yeah.
I think we've done pretty good getting, and we had to address flood plan, you had to address ADUs. So you, you've done the things that you really have to. And so I, I would say, let's put this off and not create another haphazard rush to fix something. And let's, you know, coordinate it with Public Works and Fire Department and Councils so that we can get it cleaned up and fixed up.
All right, sounds great, thank you. Any liaison reports?
No meetings since the last time we met.
Okay, any additional public comments?
Actually, I do have some.
Oh, you have some?
CPC did agree to increase the funding for the Rotunda by four hundred thousand dollars because one of the grants is not going to come through. Whether it's a federal grant that's been frozen, I don't know, I'm not sure of the particulars of it, but. So, so now we're putting our taxpayer money into the Rotunda.
Okay. Anne?
So it was the coastal zone management and the funding that they had available. We had, we had them down for, I think, a million dollars. And if they have five million dollars in funding in total, you have grants. And they are looking particularly at grants that will improve public safety. And the Rotunda is unlikely to make that cut.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any public comments? Okay, minutes of January thirteenth.
Move to a probe.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, other matters, matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair. Yes, I have one. Our special permit at Reed Park. Which is really for the future extension, but applies to the whole thing. Said that there should be no rafting of boats, tying two boats side by side. There's a group that's coming into Manchester Harbor, the Cruising Club of America. And they've asked to have an exemption for that group. And I think the select board is the one that can grant that exception. But Anne, she's just left, wanted to know if we had any strong feelings one way or the other. It's a non-weekend, Thursday, June twenty-sixth from four P.M. to Friday, the twenty-seventh at ten A.M. So it's not a weekend, which wouldn't matter to me. And any thoughts?
So like how many boats? Big, small?
Yeah, probably big, but they're thankful and spend a lot of money to go to the restaurants. So. I would say if they rafted fewer breaths, that would be fine for a limited time, but.
This is water use, not lead use.
Yeah, do we have any? Yeah, go ahead.
Only, I don't know anything about boats, so I'll just say, I'm a small craft person, but I, it makes me a little bit questionable because we did just say no rafting and now we.
Now we're saying that.
Saying rafting, we're making an exception, but I would defer to the harbor master on this and to see whether he thinks it's safe and advisable.
Good plan. Okay, I will get back to Anne on that. Any other business? We've got a lot done tonight, thank you, everybody.
As all please.
I would suggest if anybody needs printouts of any of these things, you take them. Thank you, Shannon, for making all these copies. It was.
Thank you, Shannon.
You have to give me like a copy of any of this, fascinating. Sorry I made you spend all that paper, but it was helpful to have them. Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we can get on Wednesday at seven.
Oh, right, we are going to meet Wednesday at seven, okay.
So I will be dropping them to your folders as the day progresses tomorrow.